But anyway, just want to make a comment about the meeting from about a month ago when the topic of the extension of the installments got brought up. And I've had some time to think about it. I was going to say something one night, but Jim and Jerry, their texts going back and forth were too good for me to break in. But anyway, the topic was brought up by the St. Lawrence Tax Collector about people who were complaining about the fact that they didn't have enough time to pay the installments. And as you well know, the installments are, you're paying the face amount of the taxes, but you have three installments to make those payments. July 31st, September 15th, and October 31st. So you are paying the same as if you didn't do the installments, but you walked in my office October 31st and paid, you're paying the same amount. And she said the St. Lawrence Tax Collector had 25 people who do the installments, two complained, two, as in two, that there wasn't enough time. I have 350 people who do the installments, none of them complained. And since the meeting, I've asked people who do installments, yeah, that's enough time, they're just happy that they have the three installments. So, you know, my issue is that, and you guys can do what you want, I'm not afraid of the work, I'll do whatever the board wants. But my issue is that the 600 people, I have like 9,000 people who pay in the discount. St. Lawrence has 800 properties altogether, 800 altogether. I have 9,000 of them who pay the discount. So there's 600 people that pay the face amount, you know, they just come in and pay it on October 31st. So if you're going to give people, installant people, you know, another month, then why shouldn't you give those people another month? I mean, you know, I'm just trying to do what's fair. I know the school taxes, any taxes are hard to pay, but I'm just thinking about the, you know, 600 people who can't make that discount payment, you know, and they make it by October 31st, which is the same as if, you know, the people who are doing the installments. That's the point I want to make before we go ahead and make that decision to extend the installments, you know, for a couple of people who complained because, believe me, you know, July and August, you know, board members ought to alternate, sitting in my office for a day. It's, uh, would be interesting. So that's my, uh, that's my two cents.
Okay, thanks for your comments. You keep going.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move to, like, the three on our agenda, personnel committee and Mr. Dupin.
Hang on here for a second. Just flip here. So we are going to approve staff conferences. Recommending the school board directors approve staff conferences. I'm not going to listen to that. Second.
Give us a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Student functions. Mrs. Stratt.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the revised 2018-2019 school calendar.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I'll just say that I appreciate the effort that went into reading, jiggering the calendar, and I believe the administration worked closely with teachers, came up with five options and arrived at a solution that we hope doesn't snow too much next year. You're not going to visit mother nature, some other nature.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Facilities committee, uh, is recommending that the board of school directors authorize KCBA architects to issue notice of intent to award letters to the identified lowest responsible bidders as follows. General construction contract Walter Rucker &amp; Company Inc. for $417,000. Mechanical construction contract of Five Star Inc., $1,113,000. And electrical construction contract AM Lynch Company Inc., $149,000. With a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't have a discussion specific to this, but I do want to thank Dr. Phillips and Mr. Perzuie for sharing their weekly updates. I find them very helpful to be staying on top and just being aware of where the projects are, so thanks for doing it.
And those will continue.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion for adjournings.
I'm moving.
Motion?
I'll need a second.
It is adjourned.
I just wanted to say one thing. I think on my yellow sheet here, we have personnel committees, Dr. Bender, I think should be, not Dr. Bender.
We got it early, that one seemed a little early. Everybody else should have Mr. Dupin. Does everybody have Mr. Dupin? Throwback.
But wasn't Mr. Dupin on mine?
You got a throwback.
Dr. Bender, Dr. Bender.
That's one from the night.
That wasn't worth money, Pat. That's a great time.
Well, I was just saying, I got a Dr. Bender, though. I was like, whoa.
Okay, now we're going to move into our board workshop meeting, and I want to thank the parents and the students who are here this evening. I know we have a special presentation, we're really looking forward to that. So, we're going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Kristi Haller, who's our principal at Lorraine Elementary School.
So, thank you for having us tonight. We have the ukulele presentation. We did a brief presentation prior to this board meeting where the Exeter Community Foundation presented a check to the school district for the ukuleles, so that way every single building will have their own set. And we have some of our members here tonight. We have Amy Lutz, who is here, Dr. Martin, who is here with us as a member, Aunt Cook, who is a member, Jim Seidel, well-known, well-known former band director, as I'm not sure where Ken LaVanne is hiding, if he snuck out, but, and of course, we know Ken LaVanne is a former board president here at Exeter. So we're very grateful to all their hard work and all the contributions they made to the district to expand upon our program. So without further ado, I'm going to invite our students to come up and perform for you on their ukuleles.
As they get situated, I will tell you, last spring, we were lucky enough with the RMF and that would music to receive a grant to get 40 ukuleles for the three elementary schools. So each elementary school, like 15 this year that we share and pass back and forth. Sneeze over, guys, it's all right. Let Josh fill in. So with the generosity of the education foundation, we now will have 30 at each school next year, which will bring our lessons, every kid will get to play each time, will get a lot more accomplished, and the talent we see tonight is a part of that program. We have 10 4th graders from Lorraine, and we're going to play This Land Is Your Land.
My parents, if you want to come up here and get pictures, don't be bashful. Okay, big smile.
Do you want to put a bit?
Here we go. This land is your land. This hill is mine. From California to the New York island. From the redwood forests to the bloodstream water. This land was made for me. As I was walking that living up highway, I saw a valley. That endless highway, I saw the flowing, that golden valley. This land was made for me. I roamed and wandered and followed my footsteps to the smiling sand of her diamond desert. And all around me, a voice was sounding. This land was made for me. Dig a bow. Thank you very much for allowing us to play. The school board's always been very supportive of the music program. We either had the opportunity to speak at the Lorraine Board Forum about restoring the elementary general music program to what it was a couple of years ago, and we're taking the necessary steps to hopefully achieve our goal of having a full-time general music teacher at each elementary building along with our band and strings, which will bring our elementary program back to its former glory as it was before. So thank you very much, we appreciate it, and have a great night.
Thank you very much.
I would use the video, but I'm afraid I don't know if I'm going to be able to see over it. And I didn't wear my highest heels tonight, so I'll just speak very loudly. But the students obviously did an amazing job. Music is a huge part of not just Lorraine, but the other two elementary schools. Of course, with Mr. Seidel being here, helped build the foundation of what is truly an amazing music program here in Exeter, something that we can certainly be proud of. So again, I can't thank the foundation enough for your support of our students, because the ukuleles are something that you wouldn't really think of. We think of recorders when we think of elementary music, not necessarily ukuleles, but you would be amazed as to how the students have embraced this and have really thought about what other instruments that they can learn to play. So, and of course, that's in part to our amazing music teacher, Nina DeLasky and Emily Holloman, as well as our parents, who are very supportive of our schools. So I can't thank all of you enough for bringing your children out to the board meeting tonight. So thank you very much. So if you could give our students another round of applause. Several of our students that performed tonight also performed, were also a part of our Lorraine book battle, and then also went on to compete at the Owatonna Creek Championship Book Battle, which was Jacksonville, Owatonna Creek, and Lorraine. And I'm very pleased to announce that Lorraine, for the first time, actually took home the trophy. There wasn't really a trophy, but it doesn't matter. We actually won. And the students who participated in that were Abigail Lee, who is here, I'm not sure if she left already, Sean Rathman, who also performed tonight, Sophia Metajacek, and Tatum Graham. So all four students, if you guys, if you're here, come on up. So I hope that they're still here. But this is Sean. So Sean put me on the spot.
Sean gets the spotlight.
So Dr. Phillips was there, Dr. Winters was there, and it was a tight competition. It really was. It really could have gone either way. So here's Sophia, here's Abigail. So we have our students that were also in the book battle. Students, I hope they're ready. Did you guys have, one have anything to say? Do you have anything to say about the book battle? Would you, would you like to go ahead? Go ahead.
The suspense was there. Like, it's just, I mean, even with the teams that didn't win, like, because there were four Lorraine teams that went into the battle, it was still like a really great learning experience for all the other, like, for, like, the kids, and it's actually like really nice for, like, this, this, like, district.
Can you explain to the board what you have to do to prepare for this? Because it's pretty impressive.
Okay. First, you either go to the store and buy, go online, rack online and stuff, and buy books, or you go to your local library, like the Exeter Community Library, or a school library, like, the libraries we have in every single school in this district. Then you read the, you read however many books you can until the cutoff line for the battle. But what you have to do also is you have to write, um, write about what happened in the story, so it proves you have read the book, and that is called a summary. So you need to do 10 summaries, um, to actually complete, like, what you have, what you need to do, so then you are a battle student. But there are 20 books, so all you need to do is read half of the books. I read all the books, but I'm lazy, I only do 10 summaries. Only 10.
And let's get some girls involved. So you, you see a question on the screen, and it's a piece of something in one of the books, and then what do you have to answer?
You have to answer the question that is on the board, and you need to remember all of the information from all of the books that you have read to know how to answer the question, and you have 30 seconds to discuss it with your group, and then after that, you have to have your final answer.
And then what would, what are the example of the answers? Like, you might ask a question, who threw the baseball? And then what do you have to answer?
You have to answer the title, and then you have to answer the author.
For every question?
Yeah.
And there are four rounds, and there's about 24 questions, so very, very impressive, yeah. They deserve a hand for that.
So our students at Lorraine and the other two elementary schools continue to amaze us. They're, they're hardworking, they're impressive, and again, the ukulele program is just one aspect of it, the book battle, and these things can't, aren't possible without the support of the classroom teachers, our specialists, and their parents. That's the way this all works together. In addition to working on those two programs at Lorraine, we also did a Day of Kindness on March 14th in response to what was happening with the walkouts. What the high school did was, was amazing, but it's certainly not something that we could do at Lorraine. So we thought about how we could make that a meaningful day for our students. So at 10 o'clock, every single classroom in our building did a lesson on kindness. We selected a book that was appropriate for every single class, for every grade level, and we put together a lesson, and everyone taught it simultaneously. And then afterwards, we did a kindness quilt that was displayed in our hallway with a theme that Lorraine, we are all on one side. We found that to be so impactful that we are going to be doing that as a yearly event, and then looking to expand that into other quarters during the school year. Taking off of that theme, this is a surprise, don't share this with anybody yet, this is a hot off the press. We're going to be doing a mix it up day, and a step it up day, and we're going to be doing it the last week of school. Mix it up day is actually an idea I'm borrowing from my husband, who's also a principal, where it came from the Teaching Tolerance website about working with students to learn about each other. So at lunch, on the, I believe we selected June the 8th, we're going to have conversation starters at each table, and we're going to have the students mixed up, so they won't be sitting with their regular classmates, they'll be sitting with other classmates from their grade level with specific conversation starters. Heather Riedinger, who is our APT president, I met with her and talked to her about it. So we're going to have parent support there, so we can keep the conversations going so students can learn about each other. And then the next day, we're going to be doing a step it up day, where the students are going to go and meet the new teachers. So if they're first grade students, they're going to go with different students that are in first grade and meet the second grade students. We feel that it's important to continue to do activities, like focusing on kindness, mix it up day, step it up day, to build a sense of community in our school, and we have found that it has helped with the students learning about each other, making friends, making friends, and it's something that we need to do as, as a school community. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd really like to thank Julie Klein, Karen DiNazio, and Rose Walinski. Without having that level of support in the building, it's really challenging to focus on doing these types of things and then work on, in other aspects. We have, as you know, the PSSEs have once again changed, and they focus more on TDQs and TDAs in the English and Language Arts area, and we've been doing extensive work with our kindergarten through 4th grade, 4th grade teachers, in working with their students to meet that challenge. Certainly, we're not sure what the tests are going to yield, what the scores are going to look like, but we know that we have worked very hard, and that piece was because of Julie and because of Karen. In addition to their work, Rose Walinski has just been an amazing addition to the stat, to our administrative team. She's been working closely with the, with the teachers to select a new software for math that we believe will also help to enhance our students' learning in that area, and with differentiation of our math instruction. So I just wanted to say thank you to all three of those ladies, because I know that I certainly enjoy working with them, the teachers enjoy working with them, and it really does enhance our curriculum and our education program that we offer here in Exeter. So at this time, does anyone have any questions for myself or for my esteemed colleagues?
You guys going to keep coming back to these meetings?
To weekly performances? You can bring them.
You can be honest. I think I open every single meeting with someone.
That would be a better move.
Sean's thinking about it.
You can bring your parents, too. I, I had a question for the kids. How many of you play another instrument? I, I do, you, okay, so, so it's, this is not your only instrument, you play others as well, this just is one of your, this is a string instrument then that you're, you're playing? Yeah, okay, great, good.
So this, they all carry this forward, though, right? They, and this is the only year that they are in?
Well, some of the students, this has become so popular that some of the students have actually purchased their own ukuleles, because they look, they want to continue to play after school. So the seed, I think, has been planted, and we certainly have some students who will continue to play.
So Sophia has her own, oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that how some of the students have blue? I thought that blue was pretty.
Yeah.
They purchased them themselves?
Yeah, their parents purchased them.
Thanks for sharing your talents with us today and sharing your stories, and coming out this evening to a board meeting. We often don't have a chance to see students in action, so this is really a great opportunity for us. Thanks so much, and parents, thanks for bringing your kids here this evening. Have a great evening.
Thanks, guys. Dave, I'd just like to call out two other music components. We had a, a really cool senior show last week, in which Mr. Seidel, who I think is leaving, did a special piece in honor of Mr. Kane, which I thought was really cool. And then in this morning's newspaper, one of our seniors, Kristen Saruski, was honored with some scholarship money from the Reddy Musical Foundation. So I think the success of our music program continues. It sure does.
And then the other thing I just want to do is to reiterate our appreciation to the Education Foundation for their contribution to this program. I know they raised some extra money, they provided us recently with a significant amount of money to help continue to make this program possible and to make it so that all kids can have access to this individually. So, thanks to them for their continued work and for actually showing up this evening and being part of this. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to, we're going to move forward on our agenda, and a reminder that to, that this workshop meeting is an opportunity for us to, to examine the agenda that we'll be approving next Tuesday. So this, this will be our opportunity to have more thorough conversation on any of these items, make amendments, make changes if necessary in preparation for the voting meeting next, I'm sorry, next Monday even. The next section is a presentation from Mrs. Guidish. This will be the 1819 Budget Review, General Fund, Food Services, and Capital Projects. Mrs. Guidish.
Okay. Attached to the board doc's agenda is the presentation, and each board member gave you a hard copy of the presentation in addition to detail on revenue and expenditures. On, on April 17th, I provided an update on the projections for next year's general fund budget, and this is where we left off, looking at a $2.3 million deficit, not showing a tax increase, and what's important is that the unassigned fund balance, when you're going to adopt a budget with a tax increase, the unassigned fund balance has to be less than 8% of your expenditures. But where we left off, it was 10%. We have a healthy fund balance, it has different components, commitments, assignments, and unassigned fund balance. So we're going to push through and look at a couple of different scenarios, including the five-year projection. The changes that were made since last meeting were in expenditures, about $85,000, and had to do with technology. Joe got some firm numbers on projectors, reflected some E-rate savings. In addition to, he got some variable chromo pricing, and so far, we have one proposal on the lease, and I will solicit more, but the numbers are better than what I originally had. I've not changed anything else in terms of revenue and expense for this year, or revenue for next year. One thing that I did adjust was the commitment to reflect that we did not spend all the capital money, and that's part of the commitment that we had originally budgeted, so I'm putting that back to $2.6 million. But again, the unassigned fund balance under this scenario is 9.2%. I mentioned all of these things already, so, except we, the, the Harrisburg, not much is going on right now, they'll be back in session May 21st, so then comes the budget crunch. We still have the governor's numbers in the budget, we'll see what happens. April 17th, I gave information on the charter school tuition rates. The recent guidance we've received from PDE is that we calculate the tuition rate for this year based upon the 1617 budget. The charter schools did their own calculation, and they did not reflect any federal expenditure deductions. PDE has said we might, we need to do that, and may as well must do that, but we still are seeing an increase. We calculated $12,000 for regular ed back in, excuse me, wrong number, $11,565 in July, using the budget, this is based on actual, using the budget, it is a higher number. Special ed, it is a higher number, but it's not as high as what the charter school had calculated, and they were sending invoices to us at the higher rates. What we've done is sent the revised tuition calculation to PDE and all the charter schools, but again, we are going to experience an increase over what we had originally projected because of the change in rates. This is a chart which illustrates what we've been paying over a number of years for charter school, mainly cyber charter. When we talk about our deficit, well, you know, this number actually is a contributing factor. Or because where our village is, is, is a contributing factor. The next few slides are for your benefit to understand the components of revenue, you know, our proper, our local revenue is 69%.
To do as a school community. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd really like to thank Julie Klein, Karen DiNazio, and Rose Walensky. Without having that level of support in the building, it's really challenging to focus on doing these types of things and then work on in other aspects. We have, as you know, the PSSEs have once again changed. And they focus more on TDQs and TDA's in the English and Language Arts area. And we've been doing extensive work with our kindergarten through fourth grade, as fourth grade teachers, in working with their students to meet that challenge. Certainly, we're not sure what the tests are going to yield, what the scores are going to look like, but we know that we have worked very hard and that piece was because of Julie and because of Karen. In addition to their work, Rose Walensky has just been an amazing addition to the stat, to our administrative team. She's been working closely with the teachers to select a new software for math that we believe will also help to enhance our students' learning in that area and with differentiation of our math instruction. So I just wanted to say thank you to all three of those ladies because I know that I certainly enjoy working with them, the teachers enjoy working with them, and it really does enhance our curriculum and our education program that we offer here in Exeter. So at this time, does anyone have any questions for myself or for my esteemed colleagues?
You guys gonna keep coming back to these meetings?
Yeah, to weekly performances? You can bring them. Sean's thinking about it.
You can bring your parents, too.
I had a question for the kids. How many do you play another instrument? I do, okay. So it's, this is not your only instrument, you play others as well. This just is one of your, this is a string instrument then that you're playing. Yeah, okay, great.
So this, they won't carry this forward though, right? They, this is the only year that they are in?
Well, some of the students, this has become so popular that some of the students have actually purchased their own ukuleles because they want to continue to play after school. So the seed, I think, has been planted and we certainly have some students who will continue to play. So Isabella has her own, oh, yeah.
Is that how some of the students have blue? I thought that blue was pretty.
Yeah.
They purchase them themselves?
Yeah, their parents purchase them.
Thanks for sharing your talents with us today and sharing your stories and coming out this evening to a board meeting. We often don't have a chance to see students in action, so this is really a great opportunity for us. Thanks so much, and parents, thanks for bringing your kids here this evening. Have a great evening.
Dave, I'd just like to call out two other music components. We had a really cool senior show last week in which Mr. Seidel, who I think is leaving, did a special piece in honor of Mr. Kane, which I thought was really cool. And then in this morning's newspaper, one of our seniors, Kristen Saruski, was honored with some scholarship money from the Reddy Musical Foundation. So I think the success of our music program continues.
And then the other thing I just want to do is to reiterate our appreciation to the Education Foundation for their contribution to this program. I know they raised some extra money. They provided us recently with a significant amount of money to help continue to make this program possible and to make it so that all kids can have access to this individually. So thanks to them for their continued work and for actually showing up this evening and being part of this. Any other comments? Okay, we're gonna move forward in our agenda and a reminder that this workshop meeting is an opportunity for us to examine the agenda that we'll be approving next Tuesday. So this will be our opportunity to have more thorough conversation on any of these items, make amendments, make changes if necessary in preparation for the voting meeting next, I'm sorry, next Monday evening. The next section is a presentation from Mrs. Guidish. This will be the eighteen nineteen budget review, general fund, food services, and capital projects. Mrs. Guidish.
Okay, attached to the board's agenda is the presentation. And each board member gave you a hard copy of the presentation in addition to detail on revenue and expenditures. On April seventeenth, I provided an update on the projections for next year's general fund budget. And this is where we left off, looking at a $2.3 million deficit, not showing a tax increase. And what's important is that the unassigned fund balance, when you're going to adopt a budget with a tax increase, the unassigned fund balance has to be less than eight percent of your expenditures. But where we left off, it was ten percent. We have a healthy fund balance. It has different components, commitments, assignments, and unassigned fund balance. So we're gonna push through and look at a couple of different scenarios, including the five-year projection. The changes that were made since last meeting were in expenditures, about $85,000, and had to do with technology. Joe got some firm numbers on projectors, reflected some E-rate savings. In addition to, he got some variable Chromebook pricing. And so far, we have one proposal on the list, and I will solicit more, but the numbers are better than what I originally had. I've not changed anything else in terms of revenue and expense for this year, or revenue for next year. One thing that I did adjust was the commitment to reflect that we did not spend all the capital money, and that's part of the commitment that we had originally budgeted. So I'm putting that back to $2.6 million. But again, the unassigned fund balance under this scenario is 9.2%. I mentioned all of these things already, so. Except, in Harrisburg, not much is going on right now. They'll be back in session May twenty-first, so then comes the budget crunch. We still have the governor's numbers in the budget, we'll see what happens. April seventeenth, I gave information on the charter school tuition rates. The recent guidance we've received from PDE is that we calculate the tuition rate for this year based upon the sixteen seventeen budget. The charter schools did their own calculation, and they did not reflect any federal expenditure deductions. PDE has said we need to do that, and may as well must do that. But we still are seeing an increase. We calculated $12,000 for regular ed back in, excuse me, wrong number, $11,565 in July, using the budget. This is based on actual, using the budget, it is a higher number. Special ed, it is a higher number, but it's not as high as what the charter school had calculated, and they were sending invoices to us at the higher rates. What we've done is sent the revised tuition calculation to PDE and all the charter schools. But again, we are going to experience an increase over what we had originally projected because of the change in rates. This is a chart which illustrates what we've been paying over a number of years for charter schools, mainly cyber charter. When we talk about our deficit, well, you know, this number actually is a contributing factor. Because where our village is, is a contributing factor. The next few slides are for your benefit to understand the components of revenue. You know, our local revenue is sixty-nine percent, you know, thirty percent state revenue, minimal federal. Expenditures by source, obviously our salaries and benefits, that's about seventy percent of the budget. By sub-function, really looking at your major departmental instruction, obviously is the largest, and your support services. Moving on to the five-year projection through twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. First, I want to emphasize that, you know, why do you do a five-year projection? Well, it's all about planning, planning for the future. You cannot just look at one year and live year by year. You do have to look to the future. And some of those steps include maybe a possible transfer to capital reserve. That is best practice. And when there are excess revenues in your current year estimate, you make a transfer, school boards, to capital reserve to fund your future smaller capital improvement projects, so you don't have to borrow as much money in the future. Borrowing is really for large, major renovations. And also look at your fund balance designations. While we're on the timeline here, I will update the board in June, early June, as, and the final adoption date is June nineteenth. But May fourteenth, next Monday, the school board has to adopt a proposed final budget. And it either will reflect a tax increase, and we'll discuss that tonight, or no tax increase. But we'll continue to make changes through June. We're not setting any military next Monday. It's just a proposed final budget on what it may look like. So these are some of the assumptions in a five-year projection. Revenue, I'm reflecting the Act One index. That would be available, and I'll show you what that means in terms of dollars per year in tax revenue, if you were to increase taxes that high. Everything else is pretty, you know, not spectacular in terms of increases, one and a half to two percent in the other areas of local revenue. Basic subsidy, one point four percent for the entire projection period. The other increases would be social security, retirement, driven by your wages. Wage projections, we have contracts, agreements in place through six thirty, twenty. And there I show the range. I do put in the projection some savings per year as people retire. In the out years, I'm not adding any new staff positions. Benefits, the largest increase besides retirement, health benefits were trending at eleven percent. March, May twenty-fourth, excuse me, is when the trust will let us know the final rate for eighteen nineteen. Currently in the budget, I have eight and a half. They had a not exceed rate of about ten and a half. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that it'll come down to eight and a half. And other non-personnel expenses, one and a half to two and a half. The adjusted index, the Independent Fiscal Office makes the projection of what the base index will be based upon the statewide average weekly wage and the employment cost index. This year, it's two point four. We get an increase because of our market value, personal income aid ratio. Doing the math for what they're projected basis, this is how the percentage increase under Act One, the school board could raise taxes. What does that mean in terms of mileage and percent? It's listed there. In terms of dollars, between this year, the value of that Act One index is about 1.4 million. And it goes up slightly because the index is going up. Enrollment projections, we're currently, and these are very straightforward. The orange line is PDE. They, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, they updated their enrollment projections. Obviously, they're different than what we're experiencing, they're a little lower. But we are obviously trending downward at about, you know, fifty students per year. What's important about that is to really evaluate your staffing. I don't have any ratios here, but that's something we have to look at. At the elementary level, K through four, we pretty much have leveled out. But, you know, we'll have to wait and see if, you know, if there is any uptick at any point. Five-six, going down slightly. The largest decrease is really going to be over the next few years at the high school. So you really, you know, we've been doing this over the years, looking at staffing. And at one point in two thousand nine, ten, we had three hundred thirty professionals. We're down below three hundred. So the corrections have been made, but we've maintained, you know, adequate class sizes. So we'll continue to do that. The assessment value, this is our property assessment, this is, it's based on what our taxes are based on. The five-year projection, two tenths of a percent, a couple million in assessed value. And that really amounts only to about ninety thousand per year. I don't foresee any great increases, so that is conservative. So if there was no tax or increase, and you were to, using my assumptions, you know, pushing it all out the next five years, the deficit will grow. And it will grow because of salary and benefit costs. We're increasing three point seven, four percent. Overall, I looked at like a three point five percent increase in wages. Revenues really aren't growing that much. I don't know what's going to happen with the state going forward. I don't know what's going to happen with property tax reform. But based on what I know now, this is what it would look like if you did not raise taxes or if you did not make any significant changes, possibly in your staffing or your benefits. You know, we're always looking at benefits. The trust is looking at ways to save money in benefits. Now, that eleven percent increase adds about eight hundred thousand dollars per year. So that's something that really has to be controlled. This just illustrates how the expenditures are getting away from your level of revenue if there is no real estate tax increase. That's what happens to your fund balance. And I could provide a lot of different scenarios. But, you know, what's important is that we have to realize there has to be some level of increase if we're going to continue on under the scenario that we're currently in. This is using the indexes that I had just previously summarized. And it really actually helps you balance your budget. But then you also still are maintaining this fund balance, and there are, we are required to maintain in a budget. If you're going to raise taxes, your unassigned fund balance has to be eight percent or less of your expenditures. And these, again, you know, show you could balance the budget, but you do have a very significant fund balance. This is looking at an increase of, say, a half a percent this year. And then raising to the index nineteen twenty. Nineteen twenty, we still have contracts in place. If you're going to pay for those wage and benefit increases, you really have to think about, you know, you know, supporting it with a tax increase, if nothing else changes. And then what if you do a three-quarter of a mil increase the following three years? It does use some of the fund balance, but you end up with a more manageable deficit. But again, you really don't want to get it to be too steep, and then you have to make drastic cuts. So again, I could run a lot of different scenarios. But the point I'm trying to make is you really do have to continue to consider mileage increases if we are going to continue as we are. This is detail on wages. It illustrates a five, three and a half percent, excuse me, average annual increase. That adds five point five million dollars to the budget. Benefits, group insurance, fourteen percent. Overall, seven point six percent. You know, retirement and social security, you know, they continue to grow. Everything else is not growing at the rate as those top three. This slide illustrates the total of wages and benefits in the projection model. And I put it in terms of, okay, what's the net increase in wages and benefits after state reimbursement for social security and retirement? So the cost in terms of the mil is one point nine, but the Act One index is only allowing this much. So what this is telling me is we're having a very difficult time keeping up with wage and benefit increases. All other objects, three hundred through nine hundred, these are all the non-payroll purchase services. We went through these definitions last month. Again, the five-year change is a decrease, so we're holding all of these flat in this projection model. The point is, increases that we are challenged with are wages and benefits. So this brings us back to the slide where we currently are. As I mentioned earlier, best practice. If you have excess revenue available in the general fund, you make a transfer to capital projects. In this scenario, seven hundred fifty thousand is being added as a transfer this current year, which brings down the excess revenue. That flows through into the final, for next year's proposed final budget. But I'm also suggesting that we keep our commitment for capital projects at the level that it's currently at. A half a percent mileage increase could be managed by doing these two things and having an unassigned fund balance below eight percent. That mileage increase really would amount to about seventeen dollars more per year on a property assessed at about one hundred and eight thousand. Commitments, again, these are things that the board has defined as for a specific purpose. We have it for PZers with contribution rate, the impact of assessment appeals, which we're still experiencing every year, and capital improvements. This chart illustrates the PZers contribution rate increases. We still have the commitment of one point seven million. The five-year increase is going to be one point eight million. What is assigned fund balance? These amounts are designated for an intended use. It doesn't require board action or resolutions, but it's things that you foresee a use of the fund balance in the future. And what do we use, what assignments have we designated? Future year deficits, I have included two years, and we have been doing this year consistently. Future pension obligation, technology initiatives, special education cost increases, healthcare costs. That's about two years of, out of the next five years. If we move the Chromebook down to K to four, you know, I put an assignment, that could happen, maybe not. And current assessment appeal that is going on. So assignments of about eight point five million. Unassigned fund balance is six point one million, or seven point nine seven of percent of the expenditures. I wanted to share the capital projects, which are being funded out of general fund for this year in the blue, in the green for next year, seven hundred twenty-one thousand. And this is coming from a general fund. This is the capital reserve and capital project funds for this year and next year. And what was approved tonight. Contracts, so the projects that were approved as part of the bid. The estimate that we were given was a little over two million. And the bid came in about sixty-six thousand more than what the KCDA had estimated. So the point here, we started out with $10 million at the beginning of this school year. We're accomplishing all of these projects this year and next year. There will be an ending balance of four point seven million. And the long-range plan for nineteen twenty through twenty-two, twenty-three are three point two million. That will leave at the end of twenty twenty-three, one point five million. And that's not adequate for capital reserve fund balance in a district this size. Which is why, when there's an opportunity to move funds to capital reserve for the future, you need to take that opportunity. That was the seven hundred fifty thousand I had listed, but also keeping some in commitments to keep these projects going. The capital projects, now this, when you go out to ten years, the amounts are four point nine million. That has to be revisited, anything beyond the five years would have to be looked at closer as we get to that point. So the proposed final budget has to be adopted May fourteenth. It'll be on the state form, budget form, which I will provide to all of you. And it will need to either reflect a mileage increase, I've shown you a half a percent, or no increase, but the unassigned fund balance must be eight percent or less. And we'll continue to review the budget. Are there any questions on the general fund budget?
Anne, I have a question. I'm looking at slide number twenty-two, General Fund Projection Summary. There's a dip from what our current anticipated budget is to the twenty nineteen, to twenty nineteen's anticipated budget in local revenue by point thirty-two percent. Could you kind of explain or expound upon why they're there?
Sure. Let's go back to this slide. Our assessed value went down, you know, about eight million dollars. So we, our local revenue, real estate tax revenue is going down about four hundred some thousand dollars because of that. And it'll actually, if you look at the five-year projection, it'll take us five years to make that up, you know, looking at the inputs. So at this point, I, you know, I will put the information on the state's form, but I need to have some feedback from you, whether you want the proposed final to reflect a minor increase or no increase.
My feeling is that we should not see an increase of any kind. Because in talking to the voters in the election last year, all I heard was taxes are too high, and the bus barn's got to go. Bus barn's gone. Let's take on number two.
Anne, if I can ask another question. I think I'm reading this right, but are we looking at higher revenue, higher revenues coming in and looking towards the end of the year? I think this is saying that there's a one point one million dollar surplus that we're anticipating for the end of the year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, versus what our budget that we had passed in the previous year showing the nine hundred thousand, nine hundred fifty thousand dollar deficit.
Correct.
Where, where's the disparity there? Does that have to do with the property reassessment that we got back? Because I'm just a little bit surprised about that.
The current year you're asking about, locally, are red The current year you're asking about locally, our revenue will end up about seven hundred thousand more than what we budgeted. And I, and I did review these things, but quickly, the real estate collection rate, we budgeted at ninety-seven point two five percent for the collection rate. It was actually ninety-eight percent, over ninety-eight percent. And for next year, we've increased our collection rate to build that in to that projection. So that was four hundred thousand. Our earned income tax is a hundred fifty thousand more than we budgeted. So, and I've built that increase into next year. But they're not going to be, you know, astounding increases going forward, but we'll wait and see. Transfer tax, so those, those Act Five-Eleven taxes, EIT transfer, they are trending upward, as I mentioned in a previous presentation. Is the recession finally over? You know, we are seeing some increases, so that's on the revenue side. On the expense side, I had shared wages in the areas where we are under budget due to turnover. Open driver positions, supervisors driving in their place. We didn't, we've had some turnover administration, that was a big part, and we at times, you know, had vacant, and that reduces your costs. On the benefit side, we had more people waiving benefits than I had originally budgeted. I don't have those numbers in front of me. And then, so overall, one point three million in, no, five hundred thousand in wages, three hundred twenty-five thousand in benefits. And then we did not spend, we didn't do all the capital projects we had anticipated. Because it took, it was a process getting KCDA's projects approved and just moving, you know, moving forward. So those things have, you know, caused that variance to go from a deficit to excessive revenue over expense.
I have a question about just the, you know, the retirements. Have we accounted for all the retirements that we would expect for this year?
We have for the professional staff, there's four, and that has been reflected in the budget savings as far as salaries go.
Okay, but that's, isn't our deadline when staff are required to announce their retirement?
Professional, February first.
February first.
Mm-hmm.
So we have, nothing unexpected coming forward in that area?
No.
Anne, with the LED lighting that's going in this summer and the numbers that were given to us about how much we're going to be saving, have you put those type of numbers into your projections?
I have not yet, I mean, that's still on my list of things to do. I have to get together with Dolphin and make sure that those are good numbers. So that's still on my list to do. The benefit healthcare increase rate, May twenty-fourth, we'll have that. And there was a couple other things. I will shop around for leases for the Chromebooks to see if we can do any better there versus what Dell proposed. And if there's any revenue changes, you know, I'll continue to monitor that. Obviously, the state, see what's going to happen with that budget, so.
Okay.
So Anne, you said something about a seventeen dollar increase in taxation. How much revenue would that bring in then?
About two hundred twenty thousand.
And you think that would be sufficient then?
Is it sufficient? Well, I think, uh, the bottom line is we have to live within that eight percent. And we do have a, a healthy fund balance. So we will be using fund balance going forward, but it's a combination of using fund balance but increasing your, your millage. So you get to a point, if you ever can get to a point, where your budget is balanced. But it's also a combination of controlling your wage increases. You know, once nineteen twenty comes and we're negotiating new contracts, you have to really take a look at what, you know, is going to be available, you know, to the district. It's a minor increase, you know, I, really looking at the capital and preventative maintenance going forward. I just want to emphasize that, you know, that's, that's part of the puzzle. You have to keep the buildings going and all your, every part of them, you know, in addition to the educational aspect of it. But we do have to use some of that fund balance.
So the millage would be what if you added seventeen more dollars to each? And what, what percent of the millage? What is it now and what would it be then?
It's thirty-two point six one four, and it would go up to thirty-two point seventy-four five. Sounds like thirty-three.
Well, I don't know of anybody else, but I think I can afford seventeen dollars over twelve months. That's a little over a dollar a month for making sure that our schools are properly staffed and, and the people that work here are properly compensated and we can all pay our bills.
So I, I got a chance to meet with, wow, that was really loud. So I got a chance to meet with Anne last week, and we kind of went over these numbers, and I, I kind of reflected, you know, I wanted to at least be able to talk about what a tax increase would look like. Because I think very often we'll shoot ourselves in the foot if we never put something that should be on the table on the table. All options should be on the table, rather than starting off from the very beginning and saying, I'm assuming that that's not going to be the right option, so I don't want to talk about it. I've thought a lot about this, and I think I agree with Jerry. You know, we're looking, I think, at a really good growth year. I think projections that were seen from economists in the economy, not only with the unemployment rate, but also with annual growth is increasing. And I think that there's a lot of room for us to be excited about looking forward. In addition to that, I agree with Pat. You know, most homeowners are going to be able to afford seventeen dollars more. There are likely very few people, I, I would assume that they're out there because I have heard some of the stories, but there are very few people who are losing their homes because of an increase. I think the real challenge, though, is not who we already have here, but when somebody looks at Exeter School District and says, do I want to locate my business there or do I want to move there for a home? They're going to look at Governor Mifflin's school district, they're going to look at Wilson's school district and say, their millage rate is far below ours. And I worry that the more opportunities we take in these good years to maybe prepare ourselves for the future is actually going to hurt our ability to grow long-term. I think we can really do a good service to the community this year by eating it in the fund balance. And with this additional one million dollars that we're looking at, both from increased revenues, that may be one-time revenues, but you have one-time revenues every year. One-time revenues as well as some of the budget savings that we've seen, those are all going to happen in the, in the coming years as well. And there's going to be more expenses to be paid and, and less expenses to be paid out. So it's, you know, some years are going to be good, some years are going to be bad, and I think this is a very good year. And we have room to say, not this year. And let's hope that that will really add to some of the growth factors that have been happening in a larger economy, and that that can be a benefit to Exeter Township and St. Lawrence Borough, to see that the school district is holding the line for this year, and, and maybe it's really time for me to buy that property, where I might be able to expand my business, or where I can buy that house so that I can have my family there. So I think that those types of things make us competitive, and we need to realize that there's a large body of literature that describes that people vote with their feet in where they want to live. And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of movement happening out in places in Wilson's school district and even in Governor Mifflin. And I think we want to make sure that we're going to be competitive for that. So I think that we should not have any tax increase this year.
Just to follow up on that, I don't, I don't want anybody to take out of Hunter's words that he thinks that Exeter School District's not being as efficient as it can be. What, what's happening is a mill in Governor Mifflin and a mill in Wilson raises a lot more money than a mill does in Exeter. The Consumer Price Index alone is up two and a half percent over the last year. We are tied into contracts that we have to pay attention to. And the other thing is, in the, in the long run, we, we make a decision on a year-by-year basis as a board, because that's how we vote. Anne is doing a five-year projection, which is how she should be thinking as the chief financial officer for the school district. Because I think what she's really pointing out is that we have to look long and hard at what's our fiduciary responsibility as board members in terms of keeping public education viable in Exeter. And I think that's more of a philosophical discussion that we're going to have to have, but it can't be totally philosophy. It also has to be based on the fact that we have some numbers staring us in the face, and whether we like it or not, are real numbers. And we have to figure out where we want to go and what we want to do as a board, and what's our responsibility as a board to ensure that we're able to educate our kids the right way.
Mike, I, I don't, I, I think you might have misinterpreted what I said. I totally understand that Governor Mifflin and Wilson have larger tax bases to lean on.
But I wasn't, that wasn't meant for you, that was meant for people who might not have understood the issue.
Fair enough. So the reason that they have larger tax bases is because their economies are more competitive. They have more municipalities with more room to work in, and Exeter doesn't have that comparatively. We do have other advantages because our community is smaller, more compact, and has access to a large highway. Let's try and emphasize those and not try and put ourselves into a hole where people look at Wilson and Governor Mifflin and continue to make the decisions without widening their tax base while ours remains stagnant.
But you, you're also pointing out something over which the school district, in terms of developing the tax base, really doesn't have the ability to do. We have the ability to work with the township to help the township pursue its ability to rezone the areas that it needs to rezone so it can be more attractive to the business community. That's how we grow the tax base. But the Exeter School District itself can't really enlarge the tax base. We can manage by, by, by being efficient in terms of how we run the district. But are you saying that the Exeter School District is going to expand the tax base?
And, and to some degree I am, because I think that there is a large body of literature that I had the great fortune of learning about in college and then researching directly through, that taxes have a direct impact on where businesses and families would choose to locate. Some of the big things that families are looking for, taxes, education, police, those are the big three things. And, you know, that's very simplistic, the way that I said it.
But do they want it cheap as well? I mean, you know, that's sort of the.
Well, yeah, but that, that's, that's the given tape, you got to choose. And I think Exeter is competitive in a lot of areas, but I think that this is something where we have not kept up with some of our neighbors. Fair enough.
I'd like to say, you know, I think there are a couple things at play from my perspective here. You know, I want to, first of all, I think, you know, we have, I, I think, a very fortunate decision to make because, I mean, we're, we're really discussing, I think, a various, you know, either a zero increase or a very small fractional increase. And you look at what's happening, you know, throughout the county and other school districts, and I think it's a testament to what's happened here in Exeter for really kind of examining every aspect of this budget, which I, which I know is being done right now and, and making every effort to kind of maximize, you know, the, the savings that we have. So it's, I mean, despite the fact that we've got contracts that are rising and costs that are rising all the time, we've been able to actually, you know, come, come with a recommendation that is not even close to what our, you know, expenses essentially would be. So I, I think that's commendable. The thing I'm concerned about is, you know, by, you know, establishing some, some sort of an expectation that this is something that would be able to continue and go on year after year. When you look at your five-year, you know, examine, when you examine your five-year and you look at the way, you know, taxes go up over time, and you look at the, the reason for that, and all of the, you know, the obligations and expenses that we have. I mean, it's pretty clear to me that this isn't somewhat of an anomaly in, in many respects. And, and so for us to keep up, you know, with the healthy fund balance that we need to maintain and to kind of honor all of our commitments, we are going to have to unfortunately face tax increases in the future. And I just wonder, my concern is, by, you know, not, not being realistic and, and adding a little bit more where we can in this very, in this very fortunate year that we have, whether, whether that would just have, that means that we would just have to add even more in following years, which might be even more, more difficult of a decision to make. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm of the mind that, you know, you, you sort of, you, you, you work it up just a little bit if you can to, to, to kind of, you know, make sure that when you have future tax increases, they, they aren't extraordinary or they, they don't have to respond to maybe some exceptional conditions that, you know, arise from something we hadn't anticipated. So I would be, I would be in favor of, you know, a very, a very modest increase that you've proposed, Anne, which I think you said is like point five percent.
Anne, last year, I know we also had a very modest increase. What was it last year that we increased?
One point two five percent.
And that, that was how many dollars?
I believe it was about forty dollars on average. Well, it would be, um.
About, about forty dollars? So forty dollars plus seventeen dollars if we raised it. You know, that's, that's less than sixty dollars. And when we look at all, and I think that the administration is doing a great job as, as far as containing costs. And if we look at all the opportunities that these children have in this district to, to grow in whether it's the arts, or whether it's in the sciences, or whether it's in technology, or whether it's in mathematics. You know, to me, fifty-seven dollars, I don't, you know, I, I, to be honest with you, I've never heard anyone complain to me about, oh, you people are raising taxes and you, uh, my house is going to be sold, I can't live here anymore. I have never heard, and I'm on the board, I think, more than anyone else that are sitting in this room right now. I, I, I can't see it, you know, I don't know who you talk to. I don't, I don't seek out people asking them, you know, how do you like your taxes or, or, or anything else. But I think what the bang for the buck that we get and for these students is what's going to make more people come to this district. I mean, I, I, I run into people who, you know, they're, they're, they went to Exeter, they moved here to Exeter because they know of, of the great education they get. When I was at the STEM fair and the kindergarten class, I had a parent come talk to me about it that they're moving from that, from another school district to our school district because they see the great opportunities that a child has here. So to me, seventeen dollars is well worth it, or fifty-seven in two years' time. So I certainly will be voting for it.
Pat, the problem comes in, that's, you know, a, as I said, in running for this office last year, I spoke to over a thousand people. Every single one of them told me that taxes are too high, every single one. Okay, that's number one. Number two, as Hunter was saying, it's making our businesses less competitive. It's making it more difficult for the township to sell itself. That's where the real growth in our tax base will come, in businesses, not in homes. Because we're kind of landlocked, I mean, there's, there's no housing development. If you look at this from the county that they put in our packet, I haven't looked at it yet, but I'm willing to bet that it says that next to no homes are being built in Exeter. But if you look in places like Governor Mifflin, their numbers are up, Wilson's numbers are up, other places, their numbers are up. So their taxing, their, their tax base is going up, ours is not going up as, as quickly. And if we make ourselves more competitive for businesses to come in, these things cease to become a problem.
Well, I will say, though, that, that, just if anybody's been following any of the school board coverage in the media, people aren't any happier in Governor Mifflin or Wilson with their taxes either. So, I mean, you know, it's, you know, so it, it doesn't matter where you are, nobody wants to pay taxes, it's just.
I know I don't.
I, I know people don't, but, I mean, the way public education is funded in this state, and until somebody has the guts to both establish a formula that fully funds schools and then has the ability to pass it. A lot of discussion about property tax reform, but there seems to be no real desire among our state legislators to, 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 to make it happen. And I think part of the reasoning is because if you talk to anybody who serves in a state legislature role, the last thing they want to do is get involved in funding local school districts. Ask any politician that will tell you that the worst political job to have is being a school director because you are literally on the ground with your constituents day in and day out. If property tax reform comes and can fund the districts in the manner in which they say they can fund the districts, you know, maybe that's a direction that we have to go in. But nobody has been able to establish a formula that, that works. that um that works, where where the everything works on paper. But there doesn't seem to be a gut for it right now at the state level, and I don't understand why.
I I do wanna um touch back on something Mike brought up um that I think really cuts to maybe something that I didn't articulate well in the first round, and I hope my first, my second round of comments won't be as long as my first was. Um, he mentioned that uh the township has a great role in uh some of the zoning areas that can incentivize businesses for prime locations. And one thing that I just wanna bring up is there are other communities in this county that are doing that far better than we are with our municipalities. Uh, Governor Mifflin has the Governor Mifflin Area Coordinating Council, which is a council of all the municipalities. I believe there's five in the Governor Mifflin area, and the school district that work together uh and advise one another on some of the things that they're seeing, and they come together. We don't have anything like that. And I think part of that, uh, part of the success that that shows is that Governor Mifflin is in a very good position right now financially. Now, I'm sure if they would come in and present here, they probably wouldn't say the same, but when they look at us, they're like, maybe we've done something right. Um, the other thing that I wanna touch on that is it's a combination of all things that we can do. It's not only we don't increase taxes this year, forget about it. I think, Dr. Hemberger, you were saying, you know, we're looking at the difficult numbers, and I I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But I think it is a realistic solution to say that some years require a tax increase. You know, I hope it's not while I'm here. It may very well be the case. Um, it definitely has been the case in the past, but some years don't require tax increases. We're in a good year and in a good year position because there's growth happening. We need to not get underneath that growth and cut it out at the legs. I think fifty-seven dollars is probably not gonna do it. But how many years do we have to continue raising taxes because we're saying every single year we're looking at a deficit? And then at the end of the year, we come around and we've got a small to large surplus happening because we did good financial decisions. We need to make a combination of all things rather than going one way at the end of the year and the beginning of the year, and then all throughout doing all the right things and then coming out better than we started. Because it's been, I think, two years now that we're looking at large surpluses that we didn't expect to happen. And yes, they're always from one-time expensive, one-time revenues, but one-time revenues happen every year. Many of the five-eleven taxes aren't guaranteed year to year like property taxes are, and yet we're trending upwards. And I think that that's gonna continue. That's that's my personal opinion, and I think we can match that with other efforts, working with the township. I think that those are critical. This is the perfect year to say, we're gonna take it off. Taxes are not gonna be increased this year. Let's look at next year and see what we need to do at that point. Because I think that is a realistic situation. And realistic situation or not, increasing taxes every single year for the next five years until we get to forty mil- forty mils, in my opinion, is not reasonable. Because over five years, that's not gonna be fifty-seven dollars. That's gonna be a heck of a lot more. And three hundred dollars can make or break a family, and I really wouldn't wanna see that happen where we do have a large number of people coming here and saying, I'm gonna lose my house because my fixed income from social security is decreasing year to year. My expenses are increasing, and now you're increasing taxes on top of all that. And I think we can avoid that this year, and I think we should.
But you know, you talk about, you know, you're, I mean, in some respects, you sort of contradict yourself because you talk, I mean, one of the, one of the big surpluses that we had last year was a transfer tax, which means somebody came in and bought a property and decided that it was worth having the property here in Exeter and being part of this community. So so those one-time things that have hit over the years have largely been transfer taxes. So somebody sees something going on in Exeter that they wanna be part of. And so I think to your point though, if there's a way that we can um facilitate some interaction with the township with St. Lawrence, and we can all get on the same page as to um how we how we develop the community and make it look more enticing for people to wanna to to wanna locate their businesses here, that would be ideal. And I think that's what we're trying to work toward, and I think that was a mandate that some of the new board members had coming on.
Uh, I just wanna just point out that that the resolution, you know, for next Monday that will be adopted really just looks at the expenditure number. Well, I have to prepare on the state's form, you know, it shows the revenue and expense, components of fund balance, but it would also have to show a minor tax increase uh or none. But I have to present it on the state forum, put it on public display, but what you're adopting is an expense number as part of the post-final. You're not adopting a mileage increase, but I think it's very good that we all, that you're providing this feedback. So I know what direction uh to go in over over the next month. This is last year's resolution, but that's really what shall be adopted. Next, next Monday.
No, and I'd like, I'm like said, you know, you've been very gritty about, you know, keeping us informed almost at every meeting up to this point in terms of where, you know, where those numbers come from, what's impacting on it, and the rationale for any expenses that you put in place. So, uh, you know, to me, I have I have a lot of confidence in our business office in terms of making recommendations that I think are are unless there's something extraordinary. You know, I my typical orientation is to try to uh understand it, number one, and then number two, try to support it as much as I can because I know the amount of effort that's going into it and uh how important it is uh for us to kind of make sure that we have adequate revenue to to cover all the obligations that we do have. Any further discussion or questions for uh for Mrs. Gage? Any other comments here?
Twenty seconds. Food service, uh, no, proposing no meal price increases. She wants to try and increase participation next year and uh actually budgeting at a break even. Jennifer does a great job.
She does a great job.
Scott will be on the agenda as well, uh, to adopt her proposed final budget in addition to the.
And it may not be shown up there, but she's brought in quite a amount of grant money.
Yes.
Tens of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
And and just, you know, to what Dave said, is I'd also appreciate the efforts made by the building leaders and by the administration to uh, you know, keep their eyes on the budget and to try to, you know, stay within the parameters that we establish as a board and at the same time trying to ensure that we are providing new opportunities for kids and that we're staying on top of those things that will enable them to be prepared for wherever they go after high school and to be able to, um, you know, assume some sort of a career, whether it's college or whether it's a trade or 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 whatever. And, um, you know, those are also the challenges that we'll have going forward too, is how do we continue to make sure that people are prepared um as budgets get tighter. And I'm just glad I don't have to negotiate the teacher's contract.
Okay. Again, thank you, uh, Mrs. Gage, uh, very thorough. Um, we're gonna move on to the next section of our uh agenda, and we do have a section here for public comments if there are. Um, if there is anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment about any items on the agenda or any other uh topics that would be relevant to the district. Seeing none, uh, we're gonna continue to move through. I'm sorry.
I do.
Yeah, Michelle, please stand up.
Okay. Um, as I was listening to the budget, uh, it was very interesting, thank you, Anne. Um, and I just, I I couldn't help but think to myself that, you know, a lot of the money was spent on personnel. And I think to myself, like, well, are we in the business of education, educating America's future? And that's where the teachers come in too. The teachers have a lot at stake here, a lot at stake. And um I think when you're looking at the budget, you need to keep that in mind as well too. Uh, because again, we are a public school system, we educate America's future, and the teachers do a tremendous job. And I think that's something that everybody on the board really needs to keep in mind as well too. I'm sure you do. Um, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
This being Teacher Appreciation Week, um, I uh appreciate that you you said that. And I think the board in the past has acknowledged the fact that, um, you know, we're not about birth order. We're about, we're about teachers. We're about um exactly what you just said. And I think we have to continue to remember that because the only thing that's different from from Wilson and us or Mifflin and us are the people that are standing in front of the room, because we all have the same buildings, we all have the same facilities. It's that talent that we attract here, it's the tools that we give that talent to be able to do their job. And uh, um, I think we just can't forget that we're in the people business.
As I said, one more thing, the AP hot, I mean, the AP, we have like the highest scores, the AP classes and work count. So I just wanted to mention that too. Our teachers do a tremendous job, so it's just very passionate about that. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. A few more, um. Item five, minutes, uh, we'll be approving minutes for the board workshop meeting of April tenth and the board voting minutes of April seventeenth. So if board members have any, um, see any thing that they would like to comment on that, please let uh Mrs. Gage know. In terms of policies, uh, next Monday evening, we'll be looking at several for second reading, and I won't go into any detail uh with those because we've been through the second reading policies, uh, that include, uh, well, let me just, let me just talk about one that we that I would like to talk about, which is the tobacco policy. We have added the uh debate aspect to that, um, but that that is still up for second reading from our internal. Um, um, the care of school property, searches, controlled substances, all second reading, student government um as well as student fundraising, um, second reading. First reading, um, use of motor vehicles, uh, this was the policy, as you'll remember, where we had a discussion about skateboards, motorcycles, and bicycles, I think. And so we've eliminated those restrictions from that that policy, and I think everyone's satisfied with that. Um, some new uh policies that um are, you know, up for the PSBA revision include public uh performance by students, um, which is uh really uh just taking a policy that was first developed back in two thousand and three, um, kind of moving some of the language, as many of these policies have, to administrative regulations because they, um, they're, they may be too detailed for policy language. And um, um, and then adding some language um that uh is more consistent with the current state code. Uh, social events and class trips, um, some very minor revisions, uh, student involvement in decision-making, very, very minor changes, uh, if any at all to speak of. Uh, suspension and expulsion, um, this entire policy has been uh revised. So it's it's worth both our, uh, I think, our board and and time well spent for board as well as our administrators take a very careful look at suspension and expulsion policy because that has changed pretty dramatically to kind of bring that in compliance with uh Chapter twelve, um, regs. Pregnant parenting and married students, um, just a few minor revisions to the title. Um, and again, uh, some administrative regulations suggested for that.
Dr. Hemberger?
Yes.
I just had a question about under, on that one there, under guidelines. What is the, it says that if a pregnant uh student could not attend for medical reasons or that it would be, there were alternate uh programs, what was?
A homebound type of program.
So they have a homebound instructor come out, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, I I think they would need a physician's, you know, uh, explanation. They're still entitled to approach to a school.
I just wanted to clarify, with clarification, because it said alternate program, I just wanna know if that's what it was, okay.
Yeah, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't go so far as to say that's alternative education as we typically think of it, you know, it's not a disciplinary.
No, yeah, I mean, it did, but that's how it's worded here, alternate.
Alternate, yeah. As opposed to alternative education, which is sometimes they looked at as a disciplinary kind of a co- um option.
And I think those words, I think those words are are vague for a reason, an alternative program. It it could be homebound, it could be something else.
Okay.
Um, and then student rights and responsibilities, um, you know, another, um, another uh series of changes that really kind of bring it into into accordance with Chapter twelve regulations. And and it's become more concise as a policy. So those are the, those are the, those are the recommendations for this coming voting meetings. Anyone have any concerns?
Yes, I'm not a concern. I'm just a question. Um, for the administration, uh, policy two thirty-two, student involvement in decision-making, how often is some manner of this applied uh for students? I know we have the student forum, um, are there other avenues uh that are available to students um for them to be involved in decision-making questions? Uh, do you guys have any ability to elaborate on maybe some of those?
Um, Dr. Phillips had told me today that Mr. Kane had mentioned that he has a student that might be interested in being um a student liaison to the board.
Oh, my gosh, you're gonna wipe out my chair.
Your wish is going to be granted possibly. Um, it's a student that sounds like they come very highly recommended. Um, so be curious to know, we know your thoughts on that, you're interested. I've expressed that I also think that that would be a wonderful thing.
And and we do have policy which permits that as well at this point too.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Michelle.
You're fine. I'm just curious if, you know, anyone else had any questions, concerns, ideas about allowing the student to be involved as well?
So there there, it would be a non-voting number though, right?
Yes.
So so what do we mean about involvement? How involved do you, are you thinking?
The the student would have an opportunity to inform the board about things that are going on in the school, different events that like, well, we have our student forum, they can certainly um give the board a a summary of what went on during the student forums. Unless the board is looking for something different, that would be the.
Well, I think one of the opportunities there too is that we can get a student perspective available to us. Um, we have, we're fortunate that we have administrators and teachers who are here available to us to answer questions. And I think it would be excellent to have a student here available to us to answer questions that we may have about school culture, uh, community, different things like that, which I think would be helpful for me.
I guess my question would be, if they were interested, wouldn't they show up already?
Yes, thank you.
I think anybody, uh, and if they if they would come, I I would hope that they would sit out and they they can't sit here at the board. I don't, I don't, I don't think so. They would sit out just like our other administrators do and they could, uh, you know, say something at the podium at the meeting when there's comment if they want to. But I I mean, I can't see them involving themselves while we're having conversations here.
Well, I I don't think that's, I don't think that's what I was saying.
Oh, I thought that was.
No, they're here just as the administrators are.
Well, you know, what I would like to do is, I mean, this is a, this is a policy that that several districts have throughout the state. And, you know, it would be, I'm I'm curious in terms of how other districts uh actually handle it with students. Um, as Dr. Phillips pointed out, I think it is an opportunity for the student to be able to uh comment on, um, I think, anything that might be relevant to the student perspective. And it all, I think it also is a, an opportunity, uh, it's a learning opportunity for a student too. I mean, it's a way to kind of get engaged and to show that we really, you know, I mean, so many times we make decisions in a vacuum. And not having the student perspective occasionally, I think, is a mistake on our part. So at least having, you know, somebody who represents the student body wouldn't be a bad idea, particularly, you know, when you have someone who may be actually interested and thoughtful and and insightful in terms of providing some perspective for us as board members. We we just don't have some of that insight sometimes. But how we do that, I mean, whether the person sits, you know, at the board table or sits, you know, in the front row in the audience, uh, that that I think I'd like to explore because, you know, that may be local preference.
I just, I.
Pardon? I don't believe so.
I would just worry, and I I, you know, we're talking about a student perspective, but one student is not the perspective of an entire student body. Um, and I would just worry that would be biased and obviously a student, you know, no offense Hunter, but I could see a student like Hunter um who cares about government and knows about that kind of, no, I, it's a good thing. Um, but not your average student who maybe struggles or, you know, isn't into student government and things like that. And now we're taking the perspective of a student that's not the perspective of the entire student body. And I don't know that you could ever get to the perspective of the entire student. And I don't know that you could ever get to the perspective of the entire student body.
Well, because it's, it's, it's representative government is really essential, I mean, that happens all the time. And that's how governing bodies work, you know, you rep, you represent your constituents to some degree. And, you know, you're right, I mean, you know, it's not, doesn't necessarily mean that they, that everything they say is, is gospel. And that it, it, there may be some concern that something they say might not necessarily be accurate, but we've got our administrators and our staff here as well. To kind of, to kind of reflect on what might, may have been said.
But a, a student, I mean, I was just thinking like, we're elected officials speaking for groups of people versus a student would not be. I don't know, it just worries me a little bit, um, bringing in the perspective of just one person. Uh, and it would be, I, I love the idea of here, seeing the students and hearing from the students, um, I think we should have more of that, you know, even maybe like student council presenting, you know, coming. Like our principals present monthly, maybe the stu, you know, the student clubs come and present or the student council members come and tell us what's going on in the schools. But I don't know, it's just that, it worries me.
I think the other thing too, you know, would be, uh, that we have a section of our policy that talks about student representation at, on, on committees. Uh, as opposed to, you know, the actual board itself, and I think committees is where you get in a little more detail on certain things. So, you know, wondering whether that's, that may be an option to consider as well.
Who else should demand a seat at the table? Who else should demand a seat at the table?
Well, we're just, I think what we're commenting on is, and we're talking specifically about students right now. And let's face it, I mean, there are primary constituents, you know, students are, you know, we serve students. And, and we develop educational services and programs for kids, for students, you know, so for them not to, to have any invitation to be, to have a voice at all. And this is a way that, I, I, I think it goes both ways too, as I said before, I think this is not only reflective of representation, but it also is, is an opportunity for learning for, for, for a student. It's an opportunity to, to kind of engage in a governmental activity. And, you know, and I think that we should be modeling that as a, as a school district, I think that's the intent of the policy anyway.
Building off that too, we do have an organizational chart that has representation for all the constituencies other than students. Uh, the board represents the community, which isn't included in that organizational chart, but the students aren't represented anywhere in there. And I think we can identify that there is special constituency compared to the larger community. Um, so I, I just want to echo what Dr. Hamburger said and then point to our own structure and I, I, I want to see that that component is added in here.
But they do have that.
I want to hear from our chair of student functions.
What?
I want to hear from our hair, our chair of student functions.
I think something to keep in mind is that the student that is being thought of in this moment has come highly recommended. So it's not, um, so it's someone that clearly has an interest, it's someone that teachers think is, um, well-rounded and good for this position. But the thing that I like about it is the comment was made, well, why don't students come to begin with? Well, do they feel welcome, do they feel this information is relevant, do they even know when we have the meetings, do they even know what we talk about? I, sorry Hunter, I did not know that when I was in high school, so maybe if we have this one student that comes, it'll open up the other students' eyes, maybe we'll get more students coming. Maybe their parents will come because the students are not interested, wouldn't that be amazing? I don't know, I think it could be a positive rippling effect and, you know, I completely agree, I mean, we're not going to listen to everything that the student says and do, do everything that they suggest. But I think that it's only fair to listen to what they have to say because, um, like Dr. Hamburger said, they're the ones that we're serving, they're the reason that we're here. I, I don't know, when I look at any, um, information that's presented to me, I try my best to look at it from all sides and not just one angle. And I think that looking at, at it from that student's perspective, um, is very important.
Okay, any, any, any more conversations relative to the policies? Okay, well, so thanks for that and I just will move forward, uh, you know, with these.
Dr. Hamburger, one more thing, if that's something we decide to do, is that a voting kind of thing or is that just where we're going with that policy?
I think the policy is already in place, yeah, it's just that we don't have any student currently identified, so, I mean, it's, it's optional. You know, I mean, we, we may have students, you know, who participate based upon their interest, they don't, we, we're not required to, to make sure that a student participates and is on here. But if there's interest in, and, and we can find a student who would be interested to participate, I think it's, um, again, I think it's sort of consistent with our, our policy directive.
I'm sorry, I just, just in looking at the policy, I mean, is it really?
Which policy is it, Mike?
Uh, the, the one we're on, two thirty-two, student involvement and decision making.
Oh, two thirty-two.
It's, we're talking about the other policy, I think it's zero zero six.
Is it?
Student of, the other one, the one we just talked about, so is this a new one, the decision making one?
This one is, this one is.
They have a question around language, because they would, really wouldn't be involved in decision making, I would say, because they, they wouldn't vote, right?
No, no. No, they wouldn't vote. It's really representation.
So should we change that?
I think we have two different policies we're talking about, this one is student involvement and decision making, the policy that we're talking about, the representation, is something that we've talked about for you, the couple of years I've been here. We've just never taken that additional step to have someone be the representative.
I feel like Roseanne, Roseanne and Dan here, I'm a little late on this one, so.
I think it was Mrs. Kutcher that always tried to bring it up, but it just never, it died on the line, it seemed like most of the time.
Yeah, I mean, did, did you say it was zero zero six?
Zero zero four point one.
Oh, four point one?
Yeah, it was two one.
Well, that, that's represented to board committees, or is that also represented?
There could be one of the membership.
Because I, it says, uh, high school students are interested in becoming represented to the student functions committee, shall submit their names to the principal. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the, the actual policy that references students participating on the actual board, at actual board meetings. But it's something we'll have to, to find. I'll, I'll, I'll find it and send a, like, there's a communication to the board so you know which policy is, we need further discussions about it, we can have further discussions. Okay. So, um, that's the end of the policy section, we're going to move on to business functions, Mr. Geller.
Thanks, Dr. Hamburger, uh, next week we'll be voting on Exeter's participation in the Burke County Joint Purchasing Board. The reappointment of our treasurer, Mrs. O'Brien, teacher, appointment of a solicitor, approval of fireworks for May days. And the resolution on real estate tax installment payments that Mr. Diamond spoke about earlier, and budget transfers.
I'd just like to make a comment about the appointment of the solicitor. And I know when we hired Sweet Stevens, you know, we, we, um, we, we, we wanted to, I think at some point really type, kind of evaluate the, the service that we were getting. I don't know if anyone has any, any thoughts, um, about it, I mean, it's, you know, the appointment of solicitor occurs annually, it's not a requirement to continue to go with the, the same firm. But, you know, my sense is that things have gone well with Sweet Stevens, um, and with Ellis Katz and Sean Lock, Lock and Dure working together with us. But I think that's something that is subject to, um, at least, you know, taking a little bit of time to, to gauge satisfaction. I know we've had conversations about solicitors being present at board meetings, not being present at board meetings, or being there as needed. I know we use our solicitors, um, at times very heavily, uh, for administration purposes and for very specific types of concerns relative to potential legal matters and issues. And from my perspective, you know, the, one of the values of working with Sweet Stevens is the depth that they have and they've shown that they've got, um, they've got, uh, members in their, in their firm. That can a, 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 address almost any aspect of, of school or, or municipal governance that you can think of. So I, I personally have been very satisfied, but I, I don't, I don't know whether other board members have a, any comments that they want to make about it. I would think this meeting might be a, a good opportunity to kind of kick it around a little bit if you have any thoughts at all.
Um, one thing that I've just always heard, uh, and I've, I've been very fortunate to be able to work alongside some long-tenured municipal managers and secretaries. And one thing that they've always recommended is every few years, it's a prudent decision sometimes to do a competitive bid for services. Just to make sure that you are comparable in terms of what you're being charged for and what the expense is. I think Sweet Stevens has only been here as our full, as our full solicitor for two and a half years, this is the first year, this is the first year, okay. So I wouldn't recommend that that would be the case now, I think, um, what I've heard is any time between four to five years. So I, I've seen nothing that I have an issue with, um, but I would just like everybody to keep that in mind, um, because I think that that's a good practice.
Uh, and I would say I think their rates are, have been very competitive, I know one of the firms that we looked at had almost doubled the rate, um, which was the, one of the main reasons for not selecting that firm. But I think they, you know, I think one of the values of having, you know, an organization like Sweet Stevens is that they don't have to spend an, an order amount of time doing research that, you know, a lot, they, they work with a lot of districts. So it's not all novel communication that they get from us, you know, they, they are very well-prepared and equipped to answer almost any question and they do it very efficiently. And I think in a cost-effective manner.
One, one more question that I do, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
I wasn't stepping up.
I was, I was just going to say, I would defer to you, the president, and to you, the superintendent, since you are the two that work with Katz, Katz and Stevens, we do not work with them. And I think if you're satisfied with them, I think there shouldn't be any qualms about the board being satisfied with them.
One, one question that I do have, um, do they provide labor council, uh, labor-related issues, do they provide council on labor-related issues, specifically bargaining?
Absolutely, absolutely, they are our chief division, our chief division.
So we don't have, we, we don't have a separate labor council?
Well, initially they were a separate council, we went with a different solicitor, now they are a complete full-service firm. Uh, and, and as Dr. Hamburger mentioned, their depth of knowledge and their array of specialists that they deal with, I mean, they, they can pretty much hit on everything you need in education.
Is, is that, is that typical though, that you wouldn't have a separate labor council from your solicitor, from your regular solicitor?
It, it really, it really depends on the firm, you know, and I think that, what it speaks to is the, you know, the breadth of, 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 of specialized folks that they have there. Now, it just so happens that Ellis Katz's labor tends to be one of his, uh, preferred and, and strongest areas.
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, he's, he has, you know, been very instrumental in, in helping us work through most of our contracts and any amendments to contracts or, uh, you know, and, and, and has been very effective. To various, um, issues as they come up, okay, so.
Mr. Japina. All right, it's ten to nine here, so we're going to address personnel committee issues from A to J, any questions? I, I would just point out one thing in there, I would like to congratulate, um, uh, where's, where's Mrs. Astry, is she still retiring, I don't see her name there.
She, yes, we, we talked about it, she's, she's moved to, she will be retiring this spring, she was going to stay till January, spring, she was already on the board.
Oh, do we, do we prove that already? Oh. Man, I am a Vanna, Vanna, Dan, this one. So, um, I don't know, any questions on any of this stuff?
Like the extended contracts?
Yeah, the, maybe you can explain to Jerry, maybe I didn't do a good job, maybe you can explain to Jerry what an extended contract is.
Uh, for item G?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the teacher contract defines the days as a hundred eighty-nine, because that are, uh, some positions which work additional days, including guidance counselors, psychologists. But there's also positions in that bargaining unit that their days are more than a hundred eighty-nine and that's our technology folks are, um. So in order to, uh, reflect that they are paying more than a hundred eighty-nine days, this is how it should be done.
They have additional duties that go beyond one hundred eighty-nine days.
Okay, so then I guess my question will be, uh, you have people under the extended contracts, you have them for ten days, twelve days, seven days, whatever. Some forty-six, twenty, uh, are they getting all of those days or is, is this like a thing to cross Ts and dot Is? If we only need you for four days, you're only going to work four days, or?
It would be up to those days.
Up to, and some will do utilize all those days, others do not.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll move to student functions, Mrs. Stratt.
This is the most that I've seen under student functions, I think, so far since I've been on board. Other A, we're going to, um, discuss field trips that occur within a sixty-mile radius, um, and I just want to point out that I know that at first the last meeting, we had mentioned, you have a thought?
Yes, I was just going to say, after our last meeting, we did put an email out to everyone that they would have to get their, uh, field trips and so forth reported to us within a month. So you all would have a chance to look at it, so these are reflective of, that just happened, so it should not happen again after this meeting.
This is a minor detail and it is not huge, but I'm just going to mention, my son's class is going on field trip next Tuesday, I have not seen it listed yet.
Uh-oh.
That's, that's kind of how this came about to me, because I knew his trip was coming up and I signed a paper like a month and a half ago, but it hasn't been on yet, so there's at least one, that's for sure, basically, not to put anybody in the spot, but.
I'm looking at Mr. Freeze.
Oh, it is so not his fault, the second grade class, they're going to a farm somewhere, I don't know, I'm a chaperone. I haven't seen it, if, if, I could have missed it, but I have not seen it because I've been looking for it, knowing that it is coming up.
Can you check on that please, Mr. Freeze? Thank you.
And by no means do I blame him or, or them, it's, you know.
And now we got to cancel it, I'm sorry, we're going to.
So, we're going to have to work that day, I like it, I'm taking.
We're going to blame you now, Mr. Freeze, you'll, you'll let us know about that? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sorry to give you more work. Um, and I'm going to follow Mr. Japina and, uh, just kind of summarize quickly, uh, we have the Old Valley School District tuition payment that's listed, an agreement with Pediatric Therapeutic Services. Um, which actually I had a question about that because it says Pediatric Therapeutic Services at the top, but then it says Pediatric Services of America.
That's a mistake.
So which one is it?
It's PT, it's PTS.
PTS, okay.
There's two on there, there's another one you look at down, um, where's it, H? H, which is Pediatric Services of America, so we will, we will get it changed.
Okay, I need to know because I also work for PTS, so to remove myself from the vote, I'm just curious. Um, and then an agreement with the Karen Foundation, um, an agreement with BCIU for driver's education behind the wheel program. Um, then a home healthcare contract for a nurse for students. Goodness, there's lots of them, an agreement with Split Concepts for Families and a dissertation research request, so lots of things there.
Uh, quick question about, um, the Richard G. Karen Foundation for SAP services, this is the one that's expanding.
Yes, it includes that extra day, yes.
Okay.
For, uh, MCIU intergovernmental agreement for shared student services, what are the services?
Um, there are special education services, I believe, Dr. Miller, and it's because we're, we're using MCIU rather than Burke County IU, so it's, that's why they term it intergovernmental. Because they're two government entities.
Can you explain that SAP one? Is that, you're adding a bit to, um?
The Karen one, yes, they've added the extra day of services into that as well.
So.
Which we've, no, I'm sorry, we agreed to that one in a different contract, this is just the SAP services in total.
But this is an increase from last year, correct?
Yeah.
Overall contract, it's increased in terms of the number of hours.
Yeah, Dr. Miller, is this the same or did we add the extra day into this? This is the extra, oh, I'm sorry, you're yelling too much, you're, you're celebrating, you're graduating, very good. Um, yeah, this does include the extra day of services, all right, thank you.
And that goes, and, and it goes where?
Ele, elementarys.
Elementarys, yeah. So it's an extra day to each elementary school?
Hmm, it's an extra day per, the three elementarys.
Okay.
Any other questions, that is the extent of our proposed agenda for next Monday evening. Remind, reminder of board members, it is Monday and not Tuesday. Remem, reminder, board members, it is Monday and not Tuesday, uh, because of the primary on Tuesday, um, so, uh, and, yeah, there was a, I, I think a dinner prior, prior to that, yeah, or time.
Uh, right, uh, excuse me, I want to create. Excuse me?
We're getting dinner?
And that starts, is that five?
Oh, five, five, five or five thirty? Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, okay, any other, um, any other topics, issues, any other board members who need to be heard?
I just want to say thank you for the extra chairs and the recycle bin, I noticed all those things and that makes me happy, so thank you. So everyone needs to recycle their papers if they don't want them, as they're leaving in the recycle bin.
That's Kerry and Donna, okay, credit to them.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting, thanks everyone.
Yay.
Thanks for coming out, so.